At this time, we'll call the monthly meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners to order. And at this time, we'll ask these one of you to stand up for the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner Langley will do the invocation, and Commissioner Evans will do the pledge.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we are grateful that you have allowed us to assemble here one more time. We ask Father that you grant us the wisdom and sincerity to deal with your people correctly, that we will make wise and prudent decisions, and not abuse the authority you have entrusted to us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you will, make sure that your cellphone is turned off or either in vibrate mode. Item number C is a conflict of interest disclosure. Does any commissioner have a conflict with any of the agenda items tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to item D, the approval of the agenda. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Busio, item number two, under Items for Discussion, would you be willing to move that over to number eight, so that we get all of the hospital discussion in one area? Commissioner Richardson, would you be willing to move item number four over, as it relates to the hospital, over to your other discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move those two items over, so that the hospital authority all be in one part of the agenda. Any other comments as it relates to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Yeah. Commissioner Bren made the motion. Commissioner Busio?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Okay, we're down to the public hearing. I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Evans, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor going into the public hearing, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. David, will you read your comments as it relates to the public hearing?
Right. Get on the right page here. This is the second public hearing for the commissioners to receive comments from citizens regarding the potential one-year moratorium for solar facilities in Beaufort County. This is, we had, the previous public hearing was on October the 2nd, our last meeting, this being November the 6th. And as drawn, that proposed ordinance is for one year.
I have nine people registered for the public hearing. Each person will be limited to three minutes, and when you hear the little noise on my phone, you'll realize that three minutes is up. The first one I have on the sheet here is Philip Madry. Philip? If you, if all of you will try to move that mic around, so Randy will be able to pick it up back there, that would be great.
I want to thank you Chairman Waters and Commissioners, and I would just say, I'm a little nervous, I'm trying to read through this one here. I'm Philip Madry, I've been a citizen of Beaufort County since 1969. In my opinion, one of the greatest privileges of living in a free country is the right to own land. In 1969, when I was 25 years old, I purchased a farm in Pantico. It was a good feeling to have a piece of land that I could do, live as I liked. In 1981, I had the opportunity to purchase a 581-acre farm in Blunts Creek, where I now live. I am now nearing the end of my farming career. At this time, I'm exploring things that I could do with the land that would ensure security for my wife and my family after I am gone. One option I am considering is a solar farm. Someone raised the question, who would clean up the site at the end of its useful life? Well, it would be the same as if you built a house or any other building. The owner of the property would be responsible for any cleanup and no one else. I am asking you Commissioners not to put any restrictions on what I can do with my land by imposing a moratorium on solar farms. A moratorium would be the same as a court-ordered injunction restricting the use of the land. Again, I'm asking you, please, don't impose a moratorium on solar farms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number two, Steve.
Thank you Chairman Waters. I'm speaking today both as a concerned Beaufort County citizen, and as a taxpayer, and as an electric rate payer. There are a lot of issues dealing with solar farms or solar facilities, which is a better term for them, that need to be thought through. There are issues dealing with the decommissioning. There have been other states where the taxpayers have gotten stuck with paying for decommissioning when these facilities have served their useful life and they've just been abandoned. So we don't need to have Beaufort County's taxpayers in that situation. Also, the way some of them have been built, they're unsightly. John Droes was in, speaking to your committee, and I thought he had some very thoughtful ideas about how to write rules in terms of buffers and in terms of also the financial protection for the county, and gave some good examples of what other counties are doing in that regard. Now, as a taxpayer and an electric rate payer, I wish it was within your purview to do a permanent moratorium, because this whole solar enterprise and the wind enterprise are crony capitalism. They aren't free enterprise. They could never stand on their own two feet in a free market. They depend entirely on a boatload of government subsidies and government mandates and other special favors. Without those, they would be non-economic. So basically, as a taxpayer, at every level of government, they're a leech on the taxpayer. At the county level, your 80% exemption that all of these facilities have is taking away from the tax revenues of Beaufort County. That's not fair to the other taxpayers. As an electric rate payer, I look at the fact that in Germany, which has gone hog wild on wind and solar, they're paying three times for electricity what we pay in North Carolina. We don't need to go down that path. And I can have some sympathy for landowners, but not when it's coming out of my pocket in my electric bill and my tax bill. Now, also in terms of the situation with the electric, a lot of the problem, first of all, it's more expensive to produce solar and wind than it is conventional electricity. But on top of that, it's intermittent. Solar doesn't make electricity when the sun isn't shining, wind doesn't, when the wind isn't blowing. The result is, there has to be a lot of expensive backup for that. So all of that adds tremendously to the cost. Duke Energy has already cited the higher cost of renewable energy for at least one electric rate increase here in North Carolina. We don't need to go further down that path. Everything that can be done to get away from that path, the better. I know you don't have that power, but what I'm urging you to do today is let's step back, let's look at all of this, and at least get our buffers and our protection for the taxpayers in place, and not let this stuff go willy-nilly. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. This petition that I'm presenting to you clearly displays that people from all over Beaufort County, including Bellhaven, Bath, Aurora, Cypress Landing, Richards Beach Road, Chacoinity, Pintown, Voice of America Road, Long Acre, Blunts Creek, Trainers Creek, and the City of Washington, among other areas, are in support of this moratorium and a stricter ordinance. These signatures represent taxpayers, voters, landowners, farmers, teachers, business owners, healthcare workers, ministers, custodians, mothers, fathers, grandmothers, and grandfathers, people who desire to protect their property rights, freedom, and the many wonderful aspects of Beaufort County. These individuals want a moratorium, appropriate setbacks, and the protection and promotion of health, welfare, and good. Working to present this petition before you, in addition to working 40 hours per week and at least one job, if not multiple jobs, to keep our household supported, we have gladly invested our extra time in distributing this petition to protect our county, showing a substantial and diverse support base throughout the whole entire county. We need you, as Commissioners, our Commissioners, to join us with your support. I have the petition. I just would like to make a copy before I hand it to y'all, if that's okay.
If you will, give that to the clerk.
Can I get a copy? Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Can I get you here? In the hallway? No. Yes.
Okay, Deb?
I was looking back out our backyard and out over the amazing farmland that surrounds our home, my heart does ache thinking about, I have my little granddaughter here, that we go back there, we see the solar farm, just the weather station, and my other grandchildren looking back, and we go on nature walks in God's creation, we love it. And so with that on my heart, it kind of aches at the thought of this view being destroyed. It's beautiful farmland, the rich black soil of Terraceau right there, in the heart of Terraceau. The current ordinance for our county allows solar panels 50 feet from my dwelling and not my property boundary. This is truly disturbing to me, not just for me, but for every citizen of Beaufort County. I began to think about how suddenly these companies have an interest. It has been talked about, but no investors jumped in with their own funding to make it happen, because it is totally not cost-effective in any way. It is only now, with federal funding, that companies have jumped into this, even though there's valid research that shows this isn't needed and will not produce what is predicted. There isn't an investor out there in the entire county, country, who would put their money in these projects without the upfront federal funding that is what now lies their pockets. We have already seen countless bankruptcies and lawsuits that are pending with solar companies who have not fulfilled their upfront promises once they receive their federal subsidies. They care nothing for our county constituents, your constituents. They only care about their bank accounts, even though they talk a sweet game. I am overwhelmed with sadness that now our own tax dollars are being used to damage our own property value, and that we seem to have no personal say in the matter. As the truth unfolds, and I am sure as Commissioners, you have a better understanding of what is at stake for our county, that you will not hesitate to protect us for enacting a moratorium on your constituents' behalf. Please, I'm asking you, enact an immediate one-year moratorium, and please consider placing that Wilkinson Solar project under this moratorium. Please seek to establish greater setbacks and an updated ordinance to protect families and businesses. And please take the time, and moratorium would provide, to do further research, to stand up with courage for your own people, and get a truly sound ordinance written that protects our county. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Good evening, gentlemen. I would like to thank Commissioners Busio, Booth, and Bren for their extensive investigative work regarding a solar moratorium for Beaufort County. Having audited two of these proceedings and listening to various debates concerning the issue and criteria, I feel we have only scratched the surface of a very deep and broad subject. As stated earlier by my fellow citizens, and confirmed by Commissioner Busio, the completion of Wilkinson Solar will result in over 1 million tax loss to Beaufort County. This is including the other solar farms that are already in operation. Since the panels that are proposed are approximately 30 years in longevity, the result would be a $30 million tax loss for our county. These panels are not needed until 2032, stated by Dominion Power. There needs to be a continued discussion of setbacks regarding the panels and substation, and also a discussion of the devaluation or loss of individuals' lifetime investments, their homes and property, for there is no defined regulation for panel remediation or procurement of bonds. Beaufort County is a Tier 1 county, and being situated on the Pamlico Peninsula, we are blessed with unlimited abundant resources. These resources are coveted by many states, as well as countries around the world. We have the second-largest fish estuary in the United States, some of the most productive fertile farmland in the world. We have unfettered wildlife consisting of thousands of species, including the endangered red wolf. We have an unlimited water supply, although sometimes too much water, but we have fresh air and a safe environment. But until we value these precious resources as a sustaining life force for ourselves and children, we will always remain a Tier 1 county. Please do not sell us out to fast-talking salespeople and billion-dollar tax subsidized machines. I respectfully request for you to vote to instate a one-year moratorium to protect the citizens and resources of Beaufort County. And after witnessing mass shootings and a world that is truly in jeopardy, I ask you to instate this moratorium to bring us peace for at least one year, and to logically come up with sound solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Kathy Hardy, and I live in the community of Small on Highway 306, about five miles west of Aurora. The south side of the river has its share of issues, but this is about Beaufort County as a whole. The land is, with these solar farms, the land is pretty much ruined for future farming. So I'm here today also to support the request of a one-year moratorium. The combined tax loss for the county would be over a million dollars. An example would be the cost of, when the time comes, dismantling and disposing of the solar panels. This one-year moratorium would help in order to work out the logistics to prevent further detriment to other communities such as Small and property owners garnering a large tax loss for the county at the expense of its citizens. So please consider this moratorium request for the taxpaying citizens of Beaufort County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kevin?
Good evening. I'm actually reading this on behalf of Melody Woolard of Bath. She's sick with shingles tonight, so I'm gonna read this for you. As I am Melody Woolard, I reside at 121 Berkeley Lane, North Carolina, Bath, North Carolina. I'm speaking tonight to convey that I cannot bear to see rich farmland taken out of cultivation and turned into an unsightly eyesore that has offered little to no benefit to our communities that anyone has demonstrated thus far. Actually, the opposite has occurred, with homes that are devalued, natural animal habitats that are destroyed, along with the beauty and function of our croplands. Our county should not be allowed to become a toxic waste dump for the people of other states in order for them to get their green credits. Because we are not in cities or gated communities, we are at the mercy of our county Commissioners to protect the rural citizens, as other citizens in the county are protected by restrictive covenants. Because this is uncharted territory in the realm of the long-lasting determinants of health and economics, it is your responsibility, as our elected officials, to take more time to think, to enact this moratorium, and to rewrite the current ordinances, before allowing this rich asset in our community to be depleted. Have you considered the impact of tourism and growth that you are allowing by letting these facilities happen, or the decline in families who may want to consider making this their home, who will no longer do so because of this? Along with these losses, have you stopped to consider that with the current eight projects already in Beaufort County, we have lost $545,000 of tax money? And the Wilkinson, if the Wilkinson Solar project goes through, our losses as your constituents will total well over $1 million. Not one of these facilities generates anywhere near this amount in taxes. Rather, their taxes, they are deferred. You have the power to stop this bleeding that will have many long-term effects on every citizen of Beaufort County. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please, think of us, your constituents first, and let those who are only here because of the government substances find less populated areas, of which there are so many, to fill their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
I was on the list to speak this evening, and then I almost backed out, as I was driving into the city limits to come to work today. All of that changed. See, I work in childcare. I oversee the care of children ages six weeks to five years old, and as I greeted my staff and the parents, and I interacted with the children, I became overwhelmed to tears. Suddenly, the thought of their future flooded me. Visions of additional solar panel facilities that also include dangerous substations, decimating open ground and precious farmland, tore through my mind like hurricane-force winds, and I knew God was telling me that I needed to stand up for these babies. I wish I could hold up pictures of each of them, but confidentiality won't allow it. So I ask you to think of your own children and your own grandchildren, and let those images stand in the place of my work children, who I think of as my own. I pushed back anger, because I did not want to operate in that realm, and God instead replaced that anger with an intentionality to speak up. I left my office after my red eyes cleared, and I took the time to stand and drink in the sight of those precious children, those future Beaufort County adults who are even now your constituents. As I pondered them, I saw children who will attend schools in every corner of this county, Northeast, Bath, Washington, Chacoinity, and all parts in between, when taking into account the Christian private and charter schools here, and then quite possibly Beaufort County Community College. I implore you to think big, think long, and think outside the box, and well into our future. What may seem and look like great immediate gain for some is quite possibly a very short-term gain with horrific, long-lasting, and detrimental ramifications. So much is still unknown, and when investigated, much has been revealed. God has placed each one of you in your position for a reason, and in my mind, 31 of those reasons are the children in my care every day. A portion of their health and well-being is held in the uplifting of your hand tonight, or the sounding of your voice, to support immediately enacting the one-year moratorium that will give time to look at proper setback distances from homes, businesses, and schools. At prior Commissioners' meetings and in personal conversations with some of you, it has been stated that Wilkinson LLC in Terraceau could not be placed under a newly enacted moratorium. However, after personally speaking with the county planner's office this morning, there are no permits for Wilkinson LLC that have been issued in our county. Since there is no permit in place, I cite NCGS 153A 340H, which clearly states that either a temporary moratorium of up to 60 days, or a full moratorium of 61 days or more would not apply to, and I quote, "any project for which valid building permits issued pursuant to GS 153A-357 is outstanding."
Sorry, your time is up.
I have a copy of that ordinance, if you would like it, in full.
Is this your only copy?
It's not ordinance, it's a statute.
Is this the only copy?
Yeah, but I have more.
Okay. All right, Stacy?
Stacy?
She's not here. Okay. Any comments from any Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, the young lady that got up and spoke, how many signatures did you have on that?
A little over 150, but that was in like three weeks, or two and a half weeks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
And I think you stated there, from various parts of the county?
Yes, sir, all over, Chacoinity, Voice of America Road, all the way out to Trainers Creek, Bellhaven, Pantico, Pintown, all over the county.
Hi, some of the comments that were made during the public, by some of the individuals, where you were quoting the loss of 540,000, a million, this, North Carolina has a state statute that says that we can only charge, at the local level, 20% of the cost of the equipment, as it goes out there. So the losses that you're talking about is the difference between 20% of being able to tax at 100% of the value. Just wanted to make that clear.
It's still a million dollars, it still would be a million dollars.
If it was, if we were allowed to do 100%. The other thing is, is somebody mentioned that it was 30 million over a 30-year period. It depreciates every year. It depreciates over, is it eight, I think it's 18 years, and it gets down to a salvage value of 25% of the initial cost. But just to clarify that. Need a motion to come out of the public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Bren, is her second. Mr. Langley? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. We're down to public comments. Mark? If you will.
Yes, my name is Mark Kane. I own Pongo Creek Tiki Bar, and we were trying to get permits, so we could have music. And the sound right now, I'm up around 57, talking, now I'm around, I'm close to 70, just talking. And the sound level right now that you have is 60. And it's like impossible to have music out there. I'm just hoping you give me permits, so I can have music on the weekends. That's about it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comments? That's the only one I had on the list. All right?
I haven't signed up, but I'll speak.
Yes, you can, if you come up to the mic.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Burl Bren. I live up on Hubbard Rec. Road 1056, and a gentleman just spoke. He was my neighbor. He runs a tiki bar next door. He's been in operation probably three or four months. Every Saturday night, the law has been there. Twice during the Saturday nights, it's been there three different times. He's been there once or twice, every time. I understand he had a citation Saturday night a week ago. I was out of town this weekend. Guy called me, he said the noise was lighter than, than it ever been before. I got another one, my neighbors live a quarter mile down the road, he said I had to get up and turn the television up, when their music started, it was so light. To have a noise meter, I think- Like I say, they've been there every time. Every time they've been there, it's been high. I understand Saturday before last was his last time. That's when he got a citation. This past Saturday night, he had it again, and they say it's light as it's ever been before. The guy said he called the cop or the deputy sheriff. I don't know if he came, I don't know if he had it on me, like I say, I was going. The noise, the noise ordinance for the town, I mean for the county, is six after nine o'clock at night. It, like I say, it's been to seven, 7.4. This is, they've been three times, and every time they come, just soon as they leave, they turn it down. They get called to come back, they check it with a meter, they say they hadn't turned it up, but it's higher than it was when it left, so they got to be turning it up. I would like to, if possible, the noise ordinance is six. I would like it dropped down to five or maybe five and a half. The deputy sheriff was out Saturday night a week ago, had his meter right there. He asked me to go in the heist and see how it was. No way in the world a man can get arrested in his heist at six. I stepped it off. It was 142 foot from my window, my bedroom window. A man can't get arrested. This is a zone, I've been there 49 years this month, or last month. And now somebody's coming in their neighborhood, disrupting the conduct of the whole neighborhood. Everybody down there is elderly. Like I say, the guy Saturday night lived a quarter mile away, and he had to go turn his television up, hear it for his music. A person goes in a bar, he starts drinking at eight o'clock, at 12 o'clock or two o'clock, he drunk, and he's driving, they're driving. This goes on every Saturday night it goes by. And that's all I got to say, sir. Thank you back to people in the community, our neighborhood, some good people there. Commissioner Brand asked me, would I talk to the gentleman, see if we could work something out?
I'm sorry, Burl.
Okay. He told me that he could do anything he wanted to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to items for consent. Any, any of these items you want to pull, pull outside for further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like item number one and item number two.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the other items? Motion by Commissioner Brennan as their second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six, one. Okay, down to items for discussion. Commissioner Langley has the first one.
Okay, Mr. Manager, you can correct me if something I say is, is off-base. All the vehicles that the county owned belongs to Beaufort County and the citizens of Beaufort County. And, and my problem is, I've, I've had three different complaints, and so I'm bringing them to the forefront. The first one is, is a sheriff's car being in Pitt County, running 78 miles per hour with a child in it, taking the child to school. To me, that is a misuse of county property. And it's my understanding that this, this officer was stopped twice by the North Carolina Highway Patrol for running 78 miles per hour with a child in the vehicle, taking the child to school. Then another call that I received was that the sheriff's department vehicles were being used to take their spouses out to dinner in Pitt County. And then the one that I witnessed myself was a county car being used to take a personal pet to the vet. And so, I think all of these are misuse of county vehicles, and I think we need to come up with a way to rectify this. Any thoughts from any other commissioners?
I've had, I've had complaints from citizens about the sheriff's department and the use of cars. Part of our problem here, and I objected to this at the time because I knew where it was going, is that there are too many of the sheriff's vehicles are unmarked. Sheriff needs a few unmarked vehicles, but half that fleet doesn't need to be unmarked. We've had, in about five or six years ago, we went through a program of identifying every county car. So, when you see it, saw it going down the road, you know what department it was, at least going down the road. And this, this is just a part of, of good management of those vehicles that we have. We have no policy that, that employees can use county vehicles for personal use. There may be a few approvals of county vehicles that are, are taken home when somebody's on call or something. But I think the way to start this may be to say to the manager, give us a list of every employee who is approved to take a car home.
And one of the things that I really want to, want to stress is, and I realize in, in anybody's job, that there are certain times when emergencies happen, and you may have to do something like this. But to be two weeks in a row, driving 78 miles per hour with a child in the car, that's just unexcusable. That's a lot of liability for the taxpayers of Beaufort County. And, and personally, I cannot sit by in good conscience and just say, well, that's just the sheriff's department. That, that is not so. Those vehicles belong to the county of Beaufort, and if something terrible happens, then the county of Beaufort is going to be liable for it because we knew about it and we allowed it. And so, I'm just simply sounding the alarm. My understanding is the highway patrol stopped this vehicle.
Yes, twice. Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, I, I worked for the Department of Transportation out of Haski for four years, and the state has a policy, a written policy, that when you're issued a vehicle, you're also issued a list of things that you can do and can't do with it. And if you're reported for breaking one of those regulations, you could be fined or lose your job. So, you know, that's something we need to look at. I, I have to agree with Mr. Langley on that.
And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say this, I'm going to say this, and I haven't talked to the officer. As a result of this trooper doing his job, he was forced to leave Beaufort County because he called and complained. This officer had been working for 26 years, and because he dared to question the folk at the sheriff's department, a call was made to Raleigh, and now he's out of here. That is so wrong.
You know, one of the things that's been talked about here in the past, and the sheriff's department bailed out on it, it wasn't the present sheriff, it was the sheriff before him, was to put tracking devices on, just like everybody else that's running commercial vehicles, almost everybody has these things, is to put tracking devices on all the county vehicles so we know where they've been. I have personally caught people in Pitt County that are supposed to be working, going for lunch at their mother-in-law's, leaving the other side of the county, taking a county vehicle, and driving it a long distance. We have been very slack on this, and I think we've got some serious problems here, and we need to get into it.
Does this new vehicles, they have GPS on them?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we have some of our county vehicles, and, and again, when I say county vehicles, I mean, I mean vehicles that we control. You know, what, what I'm hearing is sheriff's office vehicles. I mean, Commissioner Richardson may have alluded to a county-owned vehicle, but-
We control the sheriff's vehicles. We own those vehicles. These taxpayers, we go through this all the time, Mr. Manager, and I'm not going to put up with the fact that we don't have control of the sheriff's vehicles.
Commissioner, I'm not going to argue with you about it. I'm just telling you that, yes, the county owns them, but as I recall, and I'd have to research that, and, and I understand this is, this is an issue with the sheriff's office. However, there is an opinion, I believe, by the Attorney General's Office that says the sheriff is a statutorily-elected, constitutionally-elected official, and he has the ability to do with his employees what he, how he wants them to do.
I thoroughly disagree because his statutory authority goes two places. In the Constitution, it says it very clearly. It says he has the authority, he is to serve papers, and he is to run the jail. The reason that sheriffs do police work is because they were the logical person for it to be turned over, and we have evolved into what we have today with sheriff's departments. The county commissioners, county owns those vehicles, they're under the supervision of county commissioners, and Mr. Langley is right. If there is an accident, and somebody is off with a child somewhere, he runs into somebody and kills them, and he's not where he's supposed to be, we're still going to be sued, just like he hit somebody on Market Street out there. And, Mr. Manager, I'll say this to you, I'm not running from this. You are paid to help us not run from this. You are not paid to defend the sheriff. There's another statute, then I'll shut up and be real quiet and give you time to speak. There is a statute that says that county commissioners are required to give the sheriff what? Two cars and one deputy. That's what the general statute says we're required to give the sheriff. The rest of the things that we give to the sheriff are things that we give based on what we think need is and what we think he needs in order to protect the public. So, we're very much in control. It's gutless county commissioners that won't exercise their authority is what the real problem is. Now, I'll be quiet.
Brian?
Just to clarify, it is not my job, and I am not defending the sheriff. What, what I am trying to do is help the board clearly understand all of the ramifications and all of the issues surrounding it. It is not as cut and dry as it may seem. We're happy to have that conversation, we're happy to look into that, we're happy to have the legal opinion, look at that. But my understanding is, once you provide those vehicles, and you're right, those vehicles and the liability that attaches with those vehicles is under your county insurance, and if there's a wreck, we pay that insurance, we, we pay those claims. But my understanding is, once those vehicles are turned over to the sheriff, he operates them as he, as he chooses to operate them, and for you to stop that, you just, I guess, take the vehicles away from him. So, but the sheriff exercises control over his employees. They are, by, by legal opinion, they are not county employees, they are officers of the sheriff. They are extensions of him as a constitutional officer, so.
This doesn't fall under his part of the constitutional duties that he's been delegated. He is delegating constitutional duties to serve papers and run the jail. The commissioners delegate to him the rest of his duties, and those are county delegated duties.
Commissioner Brand?
I just, when the sheriff's department wants to dispose of a vehicle, they have to come to us and ask if it's okay?
When, when the sheriff's office disposes of a vehicle, it's a county-owned vehicle that comes back through surplus, and it's just like any other property, it's county-owned property.
So, we're responsible for the vehicle?
You are responsible for the vehicle, but the deputy driving the, the vehicle is not your employee.
I understand that.
He is a-
But the vehicle belongs to the county. The vehicle does belong to Beaufort County.
That's correct.
So, if, 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 when they get ready to dispose of a vehicle, they come to us and ask us, I mean, that's just, that tells me that the vehicle belongs to us, and, and we can tell them to do what we want to with it.
Boys, if this is a fiefdom, well, maybe I need to run for sheriff. Well, if it's a fiefdom-
Please, please, don't do that.
Let's, let's, does any other commissioners this way have any? Yes, Commissioner, have any?
It just seems like to me, from what I'm, what Ryan is saying, is that if they're chasing the bad guys, I don't want them to get to the Pitt County line and slam on brakes. Or they're following a drug deal or whatever, I mean, it sounds like we're, again, you give him a job to do. Are we trying to say, just don't stay in the confines? I know speeding is one thing, but we shouldn't be telling the sheriff how to police Beaufort County, should we?
Well, that's, that's, that is not the complaint. The complaint is having a child in a county vehicle, driving 78 miles per hour. That is my complaint.
Personal use.
That's a personal use. I mean, because basically, I was a deputy sheriff for 14 years, and, and we, we never did such a thing. Yeah, there were, there were exceptions when the sheriff would say, okay, because you're in this situation, you can do X, Y, and Z. But never was it okay to put a child in a vehicle and drive almost 80 miles per hour. That does not make any kind of sense. That is straight-up dangerous.
Commissioner Biggs?
Well, well, I drove a slave vehicle for 20 years, and I couldn't do what I wanted to with it. I mean, when I had to, if I wanted to go, if I was working in Washington and wanted to go to Bellhaven just to have lunch, it was forbidden. If I was working down there, I could go have lunch in Bellhaven, but for us running all over the county, do what I want to do. And if I drove it out of state, I had to get a clearance to drive it out of state. And if I was in my, and I worked, at one time, I worked 100 counties, but when they cut it down to nine, that, that vehicle shouldn't have went out of one of those nine counties that I, that I would have, I was assigned to. Not like Gary, I wasn't, I wasn't fined. I was fired if I violated it.
And, and let me say this, as a, as a deputy sheriff, a deputy sheriff has the authority to arrest in any county in the state for a felony that was committed in Beaufort County. So, therefore, there's no way you can restrict a deputy to Beaufort County. Again, I'm saying that is not what I am complaining about. I'm complaining about the safety of a child in a, in a, in a county-owned vehicle, running 78 miles per hour.
Did you have any?
I'm going to stay out of this conversation. I got my own opinions.
Brian, do we have a policy relating to driving cars home, or?
We do, the county does. I mean, and we have employees who are emergency response employees, or who are on-call for the water department, those kind of things, that may take vehicles home. But if we find an employee who is misusing a vehicle, and, and if you see an employee misusing a vehicle, please let us know, and we will address it. In fact, we are putting AVLs, Automatic Vehicle Locators, on our EMS units. We've already put that last year on, or this year, early this year, on our water department vehicles. So, we are doing those things. Again, I, I don't control the sheriff's office, and, and, you know, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not here to fight about that because, you know, I have my job, and my job is not to control the sheriff. He is an elected official, and if, and if his constituents don't like what he's doing, they will not elect him to office. But, but, you know, personally, I, from, from a county management standpoint, I, I have no control over him or his employees because they are not county employees. So, what, if, if the board is concerned about those things, which I hear you saying you are, then we need to work to, to build that relationship and to, to talk about some things, or, you know, whatever other measures you may choose to look at vehicles. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what that is right now.
Katie, will you put on the agenda for, for the next month, December, to ask Chief Rose if he will come in and make a report?
Why don't we ask the sheriff to come and make the report?
The chairman's prerogative is, I can ask Chief Rose to do it. If he chooses for the sheriff to come in, that'll be fine, but he normally is the person that comes in and speaks on behalf of the sheriff, so.
This is the weenie, you know, this, all I've seen in here is a bunch of people running from responsibility.
Okay, we're going to move down to your next item, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
I want to say one thing, though. When it comes to law enforcement vehicles, one thing I do know is that there are a number of vehicles that law enforcement will be unmarked for investigative purposes. So, we have to be very careful. We're going to start saying, we're going to give you a car, but you're going to have to mark it to show it's from the sheriff's office. That's one thing I want to, I want to bring up. And, and if I could suggest something, you may want to have that meeting in the county manager's office before you bring it to the board. This is one suggestion I would make.
Cover up, cover up, cover up.
Okay, you're up with the solid waste exemption list, Commissioner.
I understand that Mr. Parker, the tax assessor who compiled the list, is out sick tonight. And with that in mind, he has given us a list, which is about this thick. We're only collecting from about 400 people. I think we've probably got about 4,000 names here. I've looked at this, I just got this tonight, and I've looked at this, and I can't tell who's paying solid waste fees that's on this list and who isn't paying solid waste fees. So, I would like to ask the manager if he would go back to Mr. Parker and ask him to give us something that is a lot more clear than this is.
Item number five, update on the state flooding, flood maps. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It was a request from Commissioner Richardson to, to update the board on the flood mapping, the state flood mapping plan program. Just to give you some background on that, on December the 9th of 2015, the Department of Public Safety held a pre-preliminary flood map data- It was a request from Commissioner Richardson to update the board on the flood mapping, the state flood mapping plan program. Just to give you some background on that, on December the 9th of 2015, the Department of Public Safety held a pre-preliminary flood map data informational meeting in New Bern. That was our first interaction with them. On September the 8th of 2016, in the board of commissioners room here, they had a public officials preliminary firm, which is the flood insurance rate and app issuance meeting, which was held by the Department of Public Safety to give officials an overview of the program. Then on December the 15th of 16, there was a public open house held at the Washington City Council chambers that DPS put on to provide the public an opportunity to view the preliminary flood data and ask questions about their property. On June 22nd of 17, public notice was published in the Federal Register for the Flood Hazard Determinations. And on or about August the 10th, 2017, and August the 17th, 2017, notice, the appeal process was published in the Washington Daily News. Separate notice of flood hazard determination were posted on the FEMA website and on nc floodmaps.com, which is the state site. A 90-day appeal process began based on those maps that were issued, those preliminary maps that were issued, that began in August, and it will end statutorily 90 days, November the 14th of 17. At the end of that 90-day appeal period, and following the resolution of any appeals and comments, the county will receive a letter of final determination from FEMA, which will finalize the flood hazard information presented on the revised firm maps and the flood insurance study report, and will establish an effective date for those to go into effect. The county's process then is to amend its local flood ordinance to reflect the final FEMA data in order to remain eligible for the National Flood Insurance Program. So, where we are with that is, again, they're in the, they're getting ready to close out the 90-day appeal period, and that's where folks could look at and say, I don't think this is right. But it's not just, I don't like it. You're required to provide scientific information, whether it be engineering studies or surveys or whatever, to them for their engineers and scientists to look at to determine if they've made that map change correct. Once that's done, and I don't know how long that will take from the end of that 90-day, from November the 14th, I'm not sure how long it takes them to finalize everything and issue that letter of final determination. But once that happens, then the county's responsibility is to update our local flood ordinance so that we match those. And if we don't do that, then they kick us out of the flood insurance program. So, you essentially have to do that, because you don't, you won't be in the flood insurance program. But there are a lot of changes that occurred. What we have stressed to folks, there are a lot of properties that are coming out of the 100-year. And what we have stressed to people is, that's good, but you know where you live and you know when it floods, so don't necessarily rely upon what the federal government may be telling you. Keep your flood insurance. It will go down. It won't be as high as it was. But if you know you flood, don't just say, well, I'm no longer in that and I'm not required to have it, so I'm not going to get it. You're still, you still may be impacted. So, I mean, you know where you live. So, don't take that as a, I don't need it anymore simply because the federal government says I don't, I'm not, I'm not on a certain plot on a certain map. But there will be a lot of benefits out of this. There are a lot, like I say, there are a lot of properties that have come out of 100-years.
It's surprising at how many have come out. One of the things you need to be aware of, the reason that so many properties have come out was the 1913 flood event is what the last study was based on. It's called a 100-year flood. Well, obviously, 2013 is behind us. So, that wasn't a 100-year flood under the definition that the federal government uses. So, they went back and they threw out the 100-year flood, which rode boats right up here on, not far from us, there are photographs. And when they did, the events that we've had lately have been two and three feet below that. So, that brought the averages down. So, everybody's, a lot of people are coming out of the flood plain, and that's going to help you with rates. You need to keep in mind that it's up to your lender if you're required to have flood insurance. The link on that is between federally insured deposits, and the lawyers all link that up. And so, if you have a federally insured loan that comes from federally insured funds, you are required by your lender to have flood insurance. So, the big stick in this is still going to be, still going to be the lenders. But if you are, were in the flood zone before, and you come out of the flood zone, you're entitled to what's called a preferred rate, which in most cases is about 500 bucks a year, so you still may want to keep it. There'll be a lot of changes to it.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Item number six, addressing the ordinance committee update. Seth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. It's just an update on the board. Our addressing ordinance committee has been meeting since the summer. If y'all recall, back in the June regular meeting, Commissioner Richardson expressed concern over our existing addressing ordinance, rightfully so. Our existing ordinance was adopted back in 1993. As moving on in that process, we assembled a group of stakeholders related to 911 addressing, first responders, et cetera. And we've been meeting regularly since the first part of July, and gotten to a point where we've identified several issues that need to be changed in our ordinance, and wanted to let y'all know that we're, our intent is to bring some draft language before the commission next month at a December meeting.
Any comments or questions? Okay. Now, we move into items for decision, and Seth, you're up on the bicycle plan grant application.
Yes, sir. With this application, bicycle plan grant application, the county has an opportunity to improve bicycling conditions, not only for transportation, but also recreation and economic development purposes. Creating an environment conducive to safe bicycling can help residents safely access shopping, education, and employment opportunities without using an automobile on every trip. In addition to transportation aspect, the county has a secondary goal of improving bicycling infrastructure to support recreation and bicycle tourism. Access to recreational opportunities is a key factor in reducing obesity and related diseases. A complete, safe bicycle network provides opportunity for exercise and can help reduce obesity as part of a larger community health initiative. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce y'all to Ms. Jamie Heath. She's the newest planner with the Mideast Commission, and she's going to be helping, assisting the county on this program if we move forward with it.
As Seth mentioned, I'm here to speak to you about the bicycle plan and grant application available through the North Carolina Department of Transportation. As Seth was alluding to, improving bicycling conditions would improve transportation for the citizens of the county. 7.8% of households in Beaufort County do not have access to a vehicle, so improving bicycling conditions for them would help them access shopping, education, and employment opportunities. And in addition to the transportation benefits, it would also help with the health of the community. An active recreation option would help reduce obesity and other diseases. And also, there's a lot of bicycle tourism that's already going on in Beaufort County right now. You have two major bicycle routes going through the county. Route 2 is the mountains-to-sea route, and Route 3 is ports-of-call. And bicycle tourism contributes $83 billion to the U.S. economy every year, and many rural areas are already using bicycle tourism as an economic development tool. Additionally, there would be safety benefits. According to NC DOT, there have been 110 bicycle-related crashes in the county since the year 2000, which is an average of about six bicycle-related crashes per year. So, safety improvements would be a major element of that bicycle plan. In addition, the bicycle plan would allow you to submit projects to NC DOT for funding. If you want to submit those projects for funding, they would be required to be in an adopted plan, so this would fulfill that requirement with DOT. And if you decide to go through with the grant application and it's funded, the planning process would include a steering committee and public input meetings to ensure that everybody's voices are heard and a plan is developed that addresses all concerns. Completed applications with an adopted resolution are due on November 9th, and the planning grant funds are provided by DOT on a sliding scale based on the county's population. Beaufort County falls in the 70%, 30% participation category, and the Mideast Commission estimates the total cost for this plan to be about $30,000, which would be 21,000 costs to NC DOT and 9,000 costs to Beaufort County. And if you would, if you decide to move forward with this grant application, you would just need to adopt the enclosed resolution, and the Mideast Commission could support the, could submit the grant application on Beaufort County's behalf. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you say had to be submitted by the night?
Yes, but we have already been working on the application. It's 90% complete at this point.
Okay. Answer my question.
Any other questions? All right.
Sure move.
Got a motion, motion by Commissioner Brand, second by Commissioner Buzzio. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that grant, too.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to Vic. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Item number two is a late application for the property tax relief, and I guess, Brian, you're going to address that?
Yes, sir. I'll pencil it for Bobby. This is a request from Mr. Parker regarding exemptions, property tax exemptions. There are late exemptions that were requested. The statute does allow the board of commissioners to receive those up until December of 17, but you have to agree to them. Or they miss the deadline. You'll see the list, the names, the date it was filed, whether they qualify, and what the qualification was, whether it was an elderly exemption or a disabled exemption. So, Mr. Parker's recommending that the board approve these late requests.
Can I have a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Okay, Vic, now you're up. The MC 7500 console radio for 911.
That's correct, Commissioner, Chairman Waters, I want to do this one more time. I thank y'all for letting me come for you again tonight. The Motorola MC 7500 is, you all are very aware, the board approved that a few months ago. They only realized that the piggyback agreement that we were trying to piggyback on was too many months long to be able to piggyback on that. So, we started doing some more research, trying to find something else that would allow us to go ahead and take care of this. And then we stumbled across that it's a sole source item. Motorola is the only one that can provide it, that will tie it into the state Viper network, which is what we need. So, if they're the only one that have the source, I asked them for the documentation showing that it was a sole source item and is provided in your agenda. What I'm asking for tonight is just to get reapproval on the Motorola MC 7500, to move forward that piece, replacing that equipment is out of date, out of life and in the service now, so we can get that replaced. I ask any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That is a 911 for state, isn't it?
Yes, this is 911 fundable.
I just wanted to clarify on that and make sure.
This is the one where we were writing under the contract with Pitt, which had expired.
Pitt County still hadn't installed their equipment. So, when we got their quote, they still haven't, today, to my knowledge, they still haven't installed it. The equipment's still sitting there in the boxes. So, who would have thought this contract was signed so many months ago?
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to.
I should have approved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Brand, second by Commissioner Buzzio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you. Ambulance franchise approval for IBX medical transport. Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. On October 10th, the EMS Oversight Committee met, and we reviewed the portfolio for Interbank's Medical Transport. That was voted on and approved through the Oversight Committee for presentation here at the Commissioner's meeting. And I have Mr. David Sawyer and Steve Hester here to answer any questions about the franchise you may have.
Any, any questions of?
Is this the first, this is the first reading, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you want to say anything?
If you have any questions.
We have to have a second reading on this, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
Okay. So, we'll have another reading next month in December before we can do the final approval.
Yeah, halfway there.
Okay.
It's been a long road.
Thank you. We're down to the hazard mitigation grant elevation projects. Lisa.
I am here, I think I sent Katie a copy, so I believe you have it in your books. We are, we need a motion to approve the grant agreement for the first two properties of FMA 2016. There are six homes in this project. This is the first two. Do you have any questions about it?
Are we approving the contract?
No, sir. This is just the grant agreement to accept the funds.
Has the grant already been written?
Yes, the grant's been written. It's been submitted to NCEM and to FEMA, and they've approved it. And this is the agreement between us, them, and the county to accept the money to fund the first two houses.
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Any further questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, item number six is the estimated cost information request for the proposed soccer field. Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, I asked the manager and the finance officer, have you received anything from the school system insofar as an estimate?
We don't have an estimate. I think they have some folks here who are able to speak to that. My last conversation with the superintendent was that they don't have those final numbers yet, because their intent is to do that as it comes along. But he sent folks tonight to be able to talk about that.
Well, I mean, if they can't give us the estimate, I don't know what there is to talk about.
I have the estimate right here.
Okay. You do have an estimate.
I have the estimate.
Would you mind distributing it to the board?
Be delighted.
Is there anything in particular you want to mention that relates to the proposal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When we came to you initially, we asked for the sun, the moon, and the stars, and it was very obvious that that wasn't the deal. So, what we have now is a proposal that will give us everything that we need at a cost we can afford. I have written stuff, I have, I'm sure y'all have seen this before, map of the property. The next pages are the estimates. If you look at the first page that I have, it says Washington High School. I penciled in $23,000 there. That is the cost of drainage, sprigging the current football practice field. We plan to do the new property involving the soccer field, practice, practice fields that can be used for several sports. The second practice field on that property will be the size of a regulation football field. There are then two half fields. That property can be used either by football, the band currently practices in the parking lot, and I think that this would provide them a better venue. And there is also a possibility, if we have another varsity sport, Dr. Phipps at one time had mentioned. time had mentioned lacrosse, maybe sometime, maybe never, but that facility will be there for them if they need it. The next page, which has a bunch of scribbling on it, if you look at the bottom number, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That was the cost for sodding it. This is obviously Eric Slade. Eric said, what in the world would you want to sod it for? If you sprig it, it will be ready for play, if you sprig it in the spring, it will be ready for play within two to three months. Is that true as far as you know?
That's not true as far as I know.
Well, let me ask Mr. Brenn, who's done an awful lot of landscaping.
Well, it would, if you planted it in the spring, you could probably play for, play on it in the fall.
Well, wait a minute. I disagree.
Well, I'm, go right ahead.
Have you examined the soil types out there?
Yes, sir.
What are they?
Don't have it with me. Our estimate is that we'll need to add sand to it in order to install the irrigation appropriately.
What does it mean, any, any acid soil?
That's right. That's a highly acid soil, and by the time you take the tree stumps out and condition that, I think you're talking about a lot more money than the estimate.
Well, I have the estimate of a man who does this for the, for a living. That's the best I can do for you.
Okay.
I have, the, the final page is probably the most important. We have property acquisition, clearing landscaping, fencing, which is a heftier expense than I thought, and then renovating the football practice field. It's important that we do all of this at once, or excuse me, all of this as a single project. And the reason is that there is some competition, as I guess there is everywhere, between football and soccer programs. And what we are looking for, and what Coach Blank is here for, the Athletic Director and football coaches, you all know, is to be sure that we are giving everyone, all sports, the best fields that we can get that will be available to all of them. After this, as I, in the narrative, there is no more property adjacent to the high school, which anyone is willing to sell at this point, or at least for the past three years that we've been in talks with them. Currently, as you all know, soccer is practicing at Coogler Field, which is a badly outdated facility in terms of plumbing, in terms of breaking bleachers. But to me, and what I offered to the school board was, the most important concern is the way those kids are getting to practice five days a week is hitching a ride with some kid who may have had a driver's license for three weeks. And while fortunately, there has been no wreck, no nothing on the way to or from, the expense of an adjacent field that all sports can use is pretty minimal compared to the consequences to the town and the county of a wreck during essentially unauthorized transportation. So there are my figures. We have to, as a community, and obviously I'm community and not school, my kids played twenty years ago, they still talk about what a great time they had playing. And I'm here so this generation of kids can come home for Christmas and share stories with their parents about, hey, Mom, remember the time? And we need to raise thirty thousand dollars. Of that, well, if you look, potential funding sources, y'all with purchase of the property, Athletic Department funds twenty thousand dollars, Booster Club will commit twenty thousand dollars. There is a large donor who wishes to remain anonymous, and she is ready to write a forty thousand dollar check yesterday or last week. Of the thirty thousand dollars that we need to raise as of now, I have verbal commitments for ten thousand of it. That's me. Yep, commitments to me. There are ten people on the committee, each of whom has agreed to raise three thousand dollars. So as far as funding, I think we're set. Funding needed for, right now, according to these estimates, again, by a licensed contractor, to step out on the field tomorrow or the day after the field is ready, the cost is sixty thousand dollars. And as you can see, we've got those funds in hand.
Let's go back to these numbers just a minute.
Aye, Commissioner Richardson.
The, you've got, you've got twenty-three thousand dollars here on this first page for installing, what is this? I don't know what this is.
I'd be glad to help you.
On the, on the summary page, there's football practice field renovation, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Well, that's what I'm saying, these numbers don't make sense because you got twenty-three thousand on the first page. If we take that twenty-three thousand and we add it to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, we got about a hundred and sixty thousand. We're gonna pay eighty thousand for the property. So now we're up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we haven't gotten all of it in there by any stretch of the imagination.
If you go back to the page, the longer page that talks about the fields on the Fort Askew property, that hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars estimate included sodding the whole field, which Eric told us was not the best idea. If you look at option to sprig field, fifteen thousand dollars, and that's how I came up with my final number.
Then you're gonna play on that the first year, on a sprig field, the first year in heavy clay soils that are highly acid.
Sir, I don't think that's the question. I thought that the question here was funding.
Yeah, that is, it is funding. And what I'm saying on, by the time you take the tree stumps out of this, on these highly acid soils and get this land conditioned so that you can sprig it, you've got a problem. You can't do it, it's too acid a soil, it's not going to work.
I have a licensed contractor who's estimated that.
When they build that golf course over there, they sprig the fairways and they played on it in six months.
They played on it, but, but you didn't have a soil mat, you didn't have a grass mat. Now, what I'm going, where I'm going to with this is, this is a project that you, you do not have an adequate budget and estimates for, and it's gonna cost, and it hold me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a real limb here, this is a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project.
That's not-
They don't have everything in here. They don't have lighting in here. They don't have bleachers in here. There's a lot of things that are not in here. And this is the reason that I raised this particular issue is, this is gonna be another one of those projects that sounds like a really good idea, and it's gonna go wild, and people are gonna be back asking the taxpayers to bail them out. But the worst part about this particular situation right here is, you already have a plastic practice field that the county owns that can be set up, my, my estimate, forty thousand dollars, which they already have, and that's Coogler Field. Now, they can talk about it being an old field, if you don't mind, let me finish.
Make wrong statements when you make one.
I'm making accurate statements and truthful statements.
The county don't own Coogler Field.
Really?
Nope.
Who does?
Talking about the city.
Who does?
My, my understanding from Dr. Phipps is that it's still owned by the Coogler family, and there's an agreement that allows the schools to use it for recreation, but this, the clawback is still there that it's owned by-
Wait, 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 whoa, whoa, whoa. Conditions of the use of Coogler Field have not changed since the year one. You know, there's a clawback on it that says that if the county abandons the use of the field, the Coogler, Coogler, Coogler family can take it back if they want to. And that's all that it says. There was an agreement between the City of Washington and Beaufort County to keep up Coogler Field and maintain it. And I was told by an official with the city about a year and a half ago, they gave their part of it to the county and said it's yours. And the reason was because the county would not do our part in keeping the field up. You already have a field that you can spend forty thousand dollars on and use it for practice. You don't need to spend three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on a boondoggle. And one more thing that I'm gonna say about this, the paperwork that has been submitted from this is totally inadequate. I want to see something that's signed by a school official, and you don't have that. You have some stuff where somebody went out and got some prices. Look, if everybody wants to put me down, I'm in the business. I'm an engineer, I do projects. I supervise estimates, I know what it costs, I design facilities. So let's get off of this business, the hood doesn't know what he's talking about, 'cause hood does know what he's talking about. And this, this is totally inadequate. They're, they're taking you into a path here that's gonna lead to a lot more money when you already have a field, that the county has controls, and we can use it as long as we want to, and we can rehab and do what we should've done to it before for forty thousand dollars. Now, I know that everybody wants something new and shiny, but is it worth three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to have a soccer practice field? And I don't think it is.
But before we go any further, I think most of the people know who you are. Will you introduce yourself for the record and introduce the other ones that are with you?
Sure. My name is Liz Cook and-
Donna Cook.
Yeah.
Donna Cookie.
And I've lived in Washington for thirty-five years. My kids went to the Washington City Schools, and they had a great time playing sports. I have no affiliation currently with the Beaufort County Schools, except that my kids had a great time. John Blank, the Athletic Director, Football Coach, and we'll ease on down line.
Michael Swenson, Principal of Washington High School.
Soccer coach.
Jim Kozick, soccer coach, twelve years. Cameron Kozick, future Pan-Pac.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Brenn?
Liz, if you don't know this figure, maybe Coach Blank does, but how long do you think that this project will take from start to finish? Two, three years?
No, sir. For what we're asking and what we've budgeted, we expect it will take a year or less. We're not asking for lights, bleachers. We've come down from what we would, what we would love, the sun, the moon and the stars, to what we truly need.
And I understand that there's grants that you can get for, for lighting and things of that nature?
Yes, sir. The lighting, we need to be careful of because there's a neighborhood right behind us, and we certainly don't want to be in the position of lighting up their life at nine o'clock at night when maybe they'd rather be in bed.
And Coach Blank, great ballgame Friday night.
Thank you very much, sir.
Commissioner Langley?
But, but in essence, basically, what you've done is kinda shared some information with us, and there's nothing further you need from Beaufort County.
That is the case, Mr. Langley. Reverend Langley?
Any, Commissioner Evans or Mr. V?
Go, go do it.
Let me, let me say on behalf of the parents, when my boys and my daughter were playing at Northside, we spent a lot of hours doing volunteer and trying to raise money, and I admire each one if you're doing it. And I realize that you, you're trying to make this thing work, and thanks for bringing information in here and updating us tonight on that.
Thank you so much.
So best wishes and hope you're able to play within a year.
Planning on it. Hope the next time you'll see me is-
Cheer.
For the first, for the first game, for the first practice, for the ribbon cutting. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still moving along. Hood, item number seven is yours.
Well, item number seven, we're back to concealed carry for county employees. I think what the head police guy in Texas said, the Attorney General said, is very apropos at this point in time. There should be more guns at church. Those people were totally defenseless. They were sitting, worse than sitting ducks. It was like shooting fish in a barrel. Concealed carry is not a bad thing, and what I'm proposing is that we allow county employees to conceal carry while they're at work if they so desire, under a particular set of rules. And a part of this is to ask the manager, if this board approves of this, to go to the counties, there are counties that already allow this, to go to the counties that allow this and see what kind of problems they've had and what kind of rules that they're working under, and bring us those various rules so that we can adopt them. Concealed carry protects our employees.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
I mean-
Okay.
I will still say, as I've always stated, when you are target practicing and when you are leisurely shooting, it's easy to hit center mass. But when your stress level go up, pandemonium's going all around, you pull that gun and you breathe like this, and you're pointing, a lot of times, not the bad guy who gets it, it's innocent people. It would be something different if every, if, if, if people who, who had these guns on, on, on their jobs were trained professionals. It is not good to put a, a gun in the hand of everybody who works for the county. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, and I, and Lord please forgive me, everybody that worked for the county don't have good sense. I'm, I'm just gonna be perfectly honest with you. I, I don't know no other way to say that. And I, and I don't mean to, to talk bad about anybody. Everybody don't need to have a gun in their hand. There are some people need to be kept as far away from the gun as the, as the moon is from the sun, and that's just the way I feel about it.
I'll let my hands be.
Okay.
I'll, a few comments, Mr. Chairman. I agree fully with, with Commissioner Langley had to say. I have a concealed weapon permit, allowed to carry. I carried a gun when I was with Drug and Force Administration. I do not believe that the training you get to carry a concealed weapon or carry a weapon is sufficient to allow our employees in the workplace to carry a weapon. One of the problems we have is even when you do a background investigation, they're not picking up mental health issues. So the question comes in, if we're gonna allow our employees to carry weapons, are we gonna do mental health checks? Bigger problem is workplace violence caused by other employees. This to me is a political ploy to allow employees to carry weapons in the workplace. I think, I'm not an attorney, but there could be some liability issues. Are we now saying to our employees, you will protect your workplace, you will protect yourself, and you will protect your other employees? Are we now indirectly hiring them to provide security in the workplace? Or is it our responsibility as county commissioners? I mentioned earlier, Commissioner, total lack of training. When do you pull the weapon? When do you fire, when don't you fire? How do you handle when police come in through the front door? Are you gonna get shot? And, and you talk about these other legal issues associated with allowing your employees to carry weapons, the Occupational Safety and Health Act. What are we putting on our employees now? What are we putting on the county? Workman's compensation law, tort law, such as negligence hiring claim from a third-party victim in the workplace, physical and psychological harm. You got a lot of things we have to take into consideration as a county. It's great, I can say I'm for weapons and everybody can carry a weapon till something happens in the county. But am I as a county gonna prepare to provide the training that they need in order to handle that weapon properly? I don't know how many people have concealed weapons permits. If you think that training's sufficient, when you're gonna get into a shootout, it is totally lacking. So I'm gonna talk with my hand also, Commissioner Booth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brenn?
I'm gonna vote for this.
You know that.
Because I think that we need protection, just like we're sitting here right now. This is a soft target for anybody who walks in that door. And someone in this room, if they were carrying a weapon and somebody broke in that door, we would at least stand a chance of knocking him out before we killed everybody in the room. I don't think that everybody in Beaufort County should, should have, have a gun that works for Beaufort County. I think there's a, a select few and, and, and places that really, really do need it. Just like animal control, they got, they got guns because they might have to put a wild dog down. They need guns. Some of the other people in Beaufort County that work for this county needs, needs to have a weapons carrier. So I'm gonna vote for it.
Well, Mr. Brenn, you better hope I ain't the one got the gun that opened that door with a gun, 'cause I'm gonna be running out, I don't know who gonna shoot him.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like one more go at this when everybody's finished.
I, did you have any? Okay. Go ahead.
Well, you're talking about deterrence here. I mean, these guys thinks everybody's gonna go out and shoot it out in the middle of the street and be quick draw and, and infinitely accurate and all that. You're talking deterrence. If you notice, the guys that are caught, that are out killing people in these soft targets, shooting them when they are totally one-hundred percent defenseless, and you've seen this on television over and over, what is the first thing they say when the police corner them? Don't hurt me! Please don't hurt me! You know, they're cowards. And they're not gonna come through that door if they think somebody in here may have a gun that might be able to shoot back. Whether he can shoot straight or not is something else. Deterrence is what this is about. One of, one of the best lessons I ever got from, in- got in police work was from a guy who finished Criminal Justice System at NC State many years ago. And he said, "It's not that policemen catch so many crooks and criminals. It's deterrence. It's the fact that they're there, and the criminal might get caught, that deters a lot of crime." So that's all I'm looking for in this. It is not gonna be perfect, but it is gonna protect our employees.
And this is my last thing. Those who, let's say you approve this, and those who have a concealed weapon, folk gonna know who has the gun. And so therefore, when the person comes in, guess who's the first one gonna get it? The one that everybody knows brings their gun to work. So you make yourself a target. I'm just telling you, there is too much liability with some folk and a firearm. And I just cannot in good conscience agree to that. And I'm gonna be honest with you. When I walk around Walmart and I see somebody walking around with a gun on their side, I'm not comfortable. Because you know why? I don't know what they are thinking, and I am just not comfortable with it. And so I just cannot go along with it. And there are a lot of folk who are perfectly model citizens, but you may know them, but I don't have a clue. And I'm not comfortable walking around with people wearing guns, except for they have a badge. Then I know that they've been trained to do what they do. Whether they're good cops or bad cops, they've been trained. But everybody you see walking around with a gun on their side has not had the proper training.
Just so you understand what other states are doing, last night I talked to my son who lives in Texas. He's a lieutenant colonel with the Air Force. And I said, "Wayne," I said, "Can you take a pistol into your office?" He said, "No, Dad, I can't do that." He says, "I'm allowed to take it on base, but I have to leave it in my car." That's as far as I can take with it. I said, "How about county employees in Texas or schoolteachers?" He says, "They can take guns, but they have to take special training courses. They have to go through the Sheriff's Department." And this is where probably some of our commissioners wouldn't like it, but the Sheriff's Department totally controls what county employees in Texas would have a gun. And just because they had a concealed weapon doesn't mean that for the next ten years they could bring it to work. They would have to take continuing education courses every year, and they would have to be skilled. The county manager would not have anything to do with it. This is the way they do it in Texas. And that concealed weapon, basically, the only people that know who has it is the Sheriff's Department and the employee. The reason the Sheriff's Department wants to know is just in case they go to one of the buildings, they know which employee has the gun. Could be three people. It could be four people. I'm gonna support the motion, but I'm not supporting the motion until we have... I mean, I'm supporting the motion, but I understand that we have to have training, and we've got to put other things to it. But I had rather be in this room with somebody with a concealed weapon when somebody comes in that door than I had to be sitting in here with nobody in this room. And because if somebody comes in here, they're probably gonna take most of us out.
Take you out. I'm a real...
Uh...
And we would be the first ones.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, it's time to vote. We got a motion?
I'll call them.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner, are you voting to approve the guns or approve the manager to go do the research?
Well, we're voting to approve the guns with the manager directed to do the research so that he can bring it back to us for policy.
But he doesn't... Is the motion for them to be able to carry it tomorrow if it passes?
No, not until the commissioners set the ground rules in place.
All right. Does everybody understand the motion?
Any change? Me.
Okay. Now, we're gonna vote. So all those in favor of the vote should raise your right hand. All right, three. Those opposed to the motion. Okay, so the vote was three to four. You got that, didn't you, Katie? All right, it's a little past seven, so we're gonna take a fifteen-minute break, and we'll be back within fifteen minutes. Okay, we'll start back again. At this point in time, we're gonna go back to item number two. Under items for discussion, move the hospital authority board update. Commissioner Buzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had our hospital authority had their board meeting on the 25th of October. And at that meeting, we had discussions on a number of issues, and we made four motions. And what I'd like to do is bring the board up on what those motions were, and also hand out some, a couple documents that I had prepared. One was on the financial review of the activities of the hospital authority from August 2015 to September, or when we closed, if and when we closed the hospital authority. And that was approved by the board by motion. I signed the contract or the letter of agreement and hand-carried that to Wilson Jones and Griffith. And in talking to the hospital authority CFO today, he reiterated that they've already started on the process, and he's coordinating very closely with him, with that, the CPAs. And I brought a copy of the letter agreement that I'd like to hand out to commissioners. Thank you. It will be the same review that was done previously by the, back in August of 2015, which was from 2011 to 2015. The other motion that we, the board made, had to do with requests for information, and they just reiterated that any requests that come in would be looked at, and there was no attorney-client privilege. The request would be honored. And if attorney-client privilege, the attorney for the board, we have our own outside counsel, would look at that and make a determination. So anybody that requires information should be coming personally directly to the hospital authority, and that information will be provided unless it has some type of attorney-client privilege on it. The other motion we made is, there's been some back and forth with Biden on some financial issues. Excuse me. Had some peanuts during the break time. And on that motion, after consultation with legal counsel, we moved not to pursue additional action to recoup any monies that we assume are due to the Board of Biden at this time. The vote, the motion was made and seconded, and the vote was seven to one in favor of this motion. It would have been eight to one because one member didn't show up, and I briefed him the next day on what happened. He said he would have voted for it also, but officially it's a seven to one vote. The board, a lot of stuff I can't discuss because it was in closed session, the actual discussion. We came out of closed session, attorney-client privilege, and we made the motion after that as discussion. The one thing I can't say is the board felt that one of the things, the fiduciary responsibility to protect the balance of that money, and it would not be appropriate for the authority to waste money pursuing that through any legal action. What I'll give out now is a document that was prepared that shows what the amount of money in the escrow accounts was on hand as of the end of September. As of September, the money that the escrow account is holding, here's some more of... Katie? The money that the hospital authority is holding is 4.5, 4,547,408.68. And that was as of September 30. We haven't received the October statement yet. We'll receive that. The other thing that I asked our CFO, hospital authority CFO, to prepare, he's in the process of doing that, and as soon as I have that, Mr. Chairman, I'll see that the board gets a copy of that. And what that will be is a view similar to this chart, but it'll go from August 31, 2011, to, I'm gonna try and do it by the end of October or September 30. That will show all the income of the hospital authority, starting with what Biden gave to the hospital authority or the county as part of the acquisition, and all the outgoing, so all income and all outgoing, from August 31 to probably the end of September or the end of October of 2017. And so you'll have a detailed document. Now, you're welcome to the monthly financial statements, which are about that thick, or you can read easier documents. It's really up to the board. The other motion that was made by the board in open session was the pending positive outcome to Wilson Jones and Griffith's financial review. The board recommends that the county commissioners dissolve the hospital authority board. In such an event, the board authorize the chair and agents of the board to take those steps necessary and reasonably appropriate to accomplish the transition. Motion was made. Motion was seconded. Again, the vote was seven to one, since one member was not in attendance. And when I spoke to him, even though it's just anecdotal information, he said he would have supported the motion. So the board is actually recommending, that hospital authorities recommend that the board take that action. You could take that basically at any time. We can wait for the outcome of the audit. If you do decide to take it sooner, not wait for the outcome of the audit, the only thing the hospital board would recommend, one of the things we would recommend, is that you continue the financial review and that we've signed the contract for. But you have broad latitude of actually what you want to take. It was felt, again, by the board and by CFO, and also discussions with our counsel, that the liability issues that is really failing is that we don't really have any outstanding. So they decided, again, in order to consider their fiduciary responsibility to maintain the funds and transfer those funds to the county. In talking to some of the members that are on the board that have been there forever, or since the beginning of August 30 of 2011, it's their opinion that they've served their time. They've done what was supposed to be done. They've met the obligations of the trailing liabilities that the hospital authority was given as a responsibility of the agreement with the county. And now it's time, the board overwhelmingly feels that it's time to fulfill their obligations and that this board take the recommendation to move forward and abolish the hospital authority. Let's see if I have anything else I wanna... I think at this time, I don't have anything else unless there's any questions. One thing I did look at with my CFO is that I've heard some discussion about the 4.5 million if Biden was to walk, which I don't think they will, since they've already put approximately $47 million into Beaufort Hospital, into the county, which benefits the county health needs. That when you look at some of the costs of running an institution, the 4.5 million would probably last about nineteen days. So if Biden ever did walk, and there's no information they would walk, 4.5 million would last us about nineteen days in order to get another hospital, if you could even get another institution to come into the county. And if we were to run it ourselves, no telling how high we'd have to raise your taxes, if you could even get professional help there. But that's all I have. And I wanted, like I said, I wanted to bring the commissioners up to date and the county manager.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner Brand.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Buzio and Commissioner Langley and Commissioner Waters for the hard work they've done on this project for the last two years. And there's one thing that I would like to see that was discussed when we first decided to do away with the hospital authority, that that money be put in an account that is collateralized. Right now, that money is not collateralized at all. And have that money collateralized to any institution that is earmarked for medical services in Beaufort County and nothing else. And when it comes time to make a motion on this, I'm gonna enter that motion.
Do we do it now? Any questions of Commissioner Buzio?
Mr. Chairman, I have one request of the chairman. I'd like to prepare a letter to the hospital authority board members. And if you would agree, I'd like your signature on it also, if you size my note.
Okay. I wanted, and I can't remember in the presentation, because I was taking a note or writing a note. Did you comment on the discussion we had on what the money would be used for and what the position was of the hospital authority?
We had some discussions at some past meetings, and some people said, "Well, let's recommend to the county, the money should be used for health needs of the county." Some members said that it's really up to the county what they want to do with the money. If you would ask me personally, well, we never took a vote on it. If you were to ask me personally, I would say I'd like to see the money. I would agree with Jim and, excuse me, Commissioner Brin, that it be used for the health requirements of the county, the health needs of the county. But that's really a decision of the county commissioners to make, how that money will be used. So I can give you my opinion on how the money should be used.
Anita, would you address, when the money flows over to the county, what the options are as it relates to a restricted reserve or restricted account?
Yes, sir. If the board did not take any action at all, it would automatically roll into the rainy day fund or the unassigned fund balance, which would be available for you to spend on anything, basically. However, you can choose to commit those funds and earmark them for the purposes of health care in our community. And you can do that by vote of the board, majority vote. But you can also undo that action by majority vote in the future if you choose to do that.
In other words, it does not bind future awards?
It does not.
Okay.
Did we mention what we were discussing earlier, Jerry? Mr. Chairman, in having a discussion, I think it was Commissioner Langley, he mentioned earlier that a previous board had voted that that's what the money would be used for.
When we first started talking about dissolving the board, that was one of the things that was mentioned, that it would be specifically designated for the medical needs of Beaufort County. For no other purpose could the money be utilized.
That's correct.
I think...
That was three years ago.
I would think that after the money's transferred, we would have to take another vote.
I think we would recommend that, yes.
Okay.
So one thing else I forgot. If the board takes the recommendation of the hospital authority, there would be then a period of time or, I don't know, a transition of the records and everything, which I guess would be worked out between the county manager and David and Joe and my CFO, and to get all the records moved over to the county. And I have the records of 2015 forward.
I got a question for you.
Ah, yes.
I understand if we don't do something with this money that's gonna go in the rainy day funds, you can do anything you want with it if it goes into that fund. Is that correct?
Unless you take a vote to commit those funds.
Okay, another option, another option was, if I'm familiar, correct, is to use it for any medical reason in the county. Is that correct?
The board has that choice, yes.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but that's kind of broad. That's what, that's kind of broad. When you say any medical reason, that's kind of broad for me. I mean, you could say, give everybody in the county $50 to buy vitamins. I mean, I would like to see it narrowed down to something.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
That's two, that's giving us two...
I mean, you can put as much constraint... I mean, you can put as much constraint on those funds or as little constraint on those funds as you so choose, just by vote of the board.
See, God might get sick tomorrow, he put, do it tonight, and ask for my $100. That's, I mean, you got to give it to them if you just say for medical needs for citizens of the county.
Still got to be a public purpose and can't benefit.
I'm public. I'm public.
Can't violate their monuments clause.
But what I'm saying is, Mr. Chairman, what I'm saying is, to me, that's too broad to just leave it out there like that.
Well, when that comes up in December, January, whenever we take the vote, we'll try to have a discussion to narrow it down a little bit more so that it does not include Talon off or... We had deferred item number four, which was Commissioner Richardson. So, at this time, I'll...
Well, my item on here, and I have several items on here that relate to hospital. Some of them have already been answered, but was what are we going to do with the $4.5 million if they shut the hospital authority board down? Now, you need to understand, I really don't think the hospital authority board should be shut down because it is an entity created by the state and the state legislature. And if we did it, you're probably going to have to dissolve that when you do this. And then Beaufort County will have no mechanism to go forward if they need to. Keep in mind that we don't know what's going to happen to medical care. If these doctors and these various institutions have to get out and compete with each other, you're going to see some really fancy organizations fold faster than you would ever think. Viden owes a lot of money, you know? They may look good and shiny and nice and everything, looks like it's running smooth, but look at their books. They owe a lot of money. And that puts us at risk. And that's why, in my opinion, we should not dissolve the hospital authority board. But realizing that this was coming, I put the item on there, about the $4.5 million. Now, the county is getting ready to borrow $3 million bonds in order to balance our budget this year, not raise taxes. $3 million is about six cents in taxes that we're not raising this year. They're stretching that out over 10 years. It's the same thing, they learned this from Washington DC. It's the same thing that's going on in Washington DC. We borrow money for continuing operations and we pay for it over a 20-year period of time. How long do you think you're going to stay in business doing that? You're not. But one of the suggestions that I have with this is, if you're going to dissolve this thing and transfer this money, you're making it dead money when you put it anywhere else other than putting it in the general fund. Let's just look at it for what it is. It's dead money when you set it aside in a special fund. Even if you set it aside in a special fund, you can still loan the $3 million to ourselves and we don't have to go out and borrow money and take 10 years to repay it. We could repay it, repay it to the fund if they put it into a fund. Or we could just use the money for the $3 million to balance the budget this year. This is sound financial planning compared to what the county's doing because we're putting money over here and squirreling it over here, and then we're going over here and we're borrowing money and paying interest on it. That doesn't make financial sense at all. So, that's one of the proposals that I have for the use of the money, is that we don't do the bond issue, we use $3 million of that money to balance the budget this year. If you're going to close it anyway, keep in mind, I'm against closing it, and I'm probably going to vote against everything that has to do with closing it because you can say, you can do that thing and say you can run the hospital for 17 days. That's, that is a, you know, I can, you know, that's getting rich on a notebook, you know? I don't know how that works. You can play that any way you want to, but if that money is still there in the authority board, you have an authority board that has the ability, because the authority board is not like just a board that was appointed by the commissioners. The authority board has a lot of authority. That's why it's called an authority board. They could use that money if they still had it to contract with somebody to come into the hospital to provide services, to take it over. And you're right, we'll never run that hospital again because of the amounts of dollars that go with it. But you can certainly go out and find plenty of people that privately run hospitals that will come in and run your hospital for you. And it saves the commissioners from sitting around here fussing and arguing about what to do, how and what, because I've been through that when I was on the hospital board before. So, there's some good reasons for keeping that money if you're going to keep it separate. Keep it separate as, within the hospital authority board and not within the commissioners. But if you're hell-bent to take the money and dissolve the board, which I think these guys are, then use the money. Don't squirrel it away somewhere else and borrow $3 million when you have money sitting there that you can use, that is certainly discretionary money. So, that's my suggestion for the use of the money. And, you know, since this is an item, I guess any commissioners can comment on this that want to.
Well, I think everybody's pretty much talked about that except you. So, why don't you go ahead and move into item number eight?
There are no commissioners that want to comment on that.
Well, anybody else want to comment on the four and a half? You mean on your financing scheme?
Yeah.
Well, I think the county manager is kind of ready to go, so...
I'd like to comment on that.
Okay.
We'd be, we think that's a good idea from a financial standpoint. Obviously, at the time the budget was created, you didn't have access to those funds. And I would agree with Commissioner Richardson, if you're going to pull it over, we could set it up. I know, you did that once. If you're going to pull it over, then we could set it up as a repayment and we could pay ourselves back. I mean, we just did not have access to those funds at the time when you created the budget. So, it would save us the hassle of going through an LGC application, which is going to cost us money as well. So, if that's the case, we would certainly endorse that as well.
We would not pay ourselves the interest.
We could if the board...
You could if you wanted to, but, you know, it'd be up to, you know, again, a discretionary decision.
Well, this is the only good idea I've heard from Hood at night. I would support that. I think that's a good, good thing to do. I don't have any problems using our own money to do that.
So, they're leaving surplus of 1.5.
Yeah, but we would pay back into that fund, just like we would if we were borrowing the money from...
From my first citizen.
What I'm saying is, you would not completely get rid of all of the funds.
That's right. That's right. I would argue that you just leave it with the authority board and keep the authority board in existence and let them loan you the money.
Well, that vote's already been taken, so, by the authority board, the recommendation.
Wait a minute, it's not up to the authority board to dissolve the authority.
I understand.
The commissioners have to vote to dissolve the authority.
And we can't do that tonight because it's not on the agenda to take a vote or take action on it, but we can put it on the agenda for a vote in December.
Whatever y'all want to do, I still say that you're going to be sorry if you dissolve that authority board because the way these medical rules, laws, and regulations are, when you have something in place, you need to keep it in place because you may not get it back.
Okay. You want to go through any of these other items on number eight?
Oh, that's why I put them on the agenda. I won't go through all of them. Thank you.
Now, you don't have 10 minutes on each one of these.
Well, if the board's going to do its work, I mean, you know, if we're going to limit this to something so quick, we could all just get up and go home now. We don't even need to be here. Request, the most recent bank statements. I think Commissioner Buzio has provided the balances in the accounts, and thank you for providing that. One motion that I'm going to make in order to save time, which the chairman's after me, is I move that this board direct the hospital authority board to go after, if you will, to get serious in collecting the $300,000 that Viden owes us. And Commissioner Buzio, before I finish this, let me say this to you. You mentioned something that the attorney thought that we would have to use legal action to get that money. Have we requested that money and Viden refused to pay it?
I would caution that we're talking about, potentially talking about attorney-client, and we would need to go into closed session. Can we go into closed session to discuss?
Wait a minute, if there's a debt that is owed to the county, that is public information. And I asked Commissioner Buzio last meeting...
You're beginning to ask questions about why the attorney, why we took the action, why the authority took the action.
Well, just because an attorney told you to take action and you took the action, that can become public information right after you walk out of that meeting.
I never said the attorney took action.
But the information that you're leading up to was discussed in closed session and it was with the attorney.
Doesn't mean that it was secret because of the attorney. You took the attorney's recommendation and the board acted on whatever his recommendation was. That can be public information right now. If you're going to dissolve the board, keep this in mind, when you dissolve the board, everything there becomes public information. So, we're going to find out about it.
I understand.
I have a strong suspicion from what Commissioner Buzio has said and what you're saying, that you asked for the money and Viden said no. And let me tell you this, I was chairman of that board for five years. We got every dime that Viden owed us. And Viden owes us that money.
Are you ready to make a motion to take action to collect?
I'm ready to make a motion to ask these commissioners to direct the authority board to get the $300,000 from Viden that Viden owes us.
Okay. Is there a second?
Weenies.
That dies.
The audit, Commissioner Buzio has satisfactorily, to my satisfaction, answered its forthcoming. The hospital authority board, for some reason, didn't understand what the open meetings laws are, and we just went through that right here with this. So, you guys, you know, you're being sued over the open meeting laws, and it's because you don't understand them. And your pain is going to keep right on going. You went into, you went into a closed session to discuss the item that you don't want to make public, and you referred to the statute. That is against the law. When you go into, you refer to the statute and you state what the subject is. The subject was whether or not you were going to require Viden to pay us the money back or not, and the commission, that was never said at the meeting. That's illegal. Then you came out of the meeting and you voted to do something.
That's not true. The state statute, if I remember, was read into session.
Yeah, but see, you're missing my point. You have to, you read the statute, which gives you the reference, but you are required to state the subject.
Right.
You never stated the subject.
The subject was attorney-client.
No, that's not the subject, Commissioner. Why do you think you're being sued?
Wait. Correct me if...
No. The attorney took us into closed session. We followed his advice, legal advice. He's an attorney, and I will listen to him.
You are required to state the subject that you're going into closed session on. You can't just sit here and say we have a secret government. We're going in the back room, talk about things, guys. You have to state why you're going to the closed session. And the reason then was on whether or not to collect the $300,000 that Viden owes us or not. You violated the law.
There's no sense talking.
That's right. Because I know what I'm talking about, and you guys are clueless.
At least you were awake during the meeting.
I think that part is asleep.
Asleep, I'm worth more than both of you together.
Now you're getting more professional. Have we looked past the rule?
Provide copies of all attorney invoices during the last three years. That is not confidential information. That is a public records request that I am making in public for you to comply with, Commissioner Buzio. Okay? You won't get it any other way. This is the only time you're going to get this. Provide copies of all minutes of meetings held since the last audit. Provide copies of all legal opinions and correspondence between board members and This is a public information request under the statutes. Well, I think we've pretty well beat to death the $300,000 because that was my next item to report on the vote not to seek the $300,000 that Viden owes us. If Viden is bucking about paying us the money, the public needs to know that. You are not serving the public when you keep these things secret. Report on the dissolution of the authority board and transferring the 4.5 million in funds. I think we've already talked about that. So, that takes care of what I had to say.
Commissioner Richardson, where are the records from the inception of the authority through 2015, the official records? Is that with the CPA firm?
Remember those boxes that were in your office? I'm looking at you, Mrs. Finance Director. Remember those boxes that were in your office that had to do with the hospital authority board?
No, I don't.
You and I went over those boxes a couple of times because I told you I didn't know what to do with them, that we turned them over to Jim, that they were in his office. They were there when you got there, and you and I personally looked at them. I had a personal conversation with you about those boxes. So, to answer you, the county has them.
At one time, I was under the impression that the CPA firm was taking minutes at the meetings and that they had the official...
They have the minutes before you guys hired a lawyer to sit in Raleigh and take minutes for a meeting in Beaufort County, which I think is illegal too.
Commissioner Richardson, respectfully, are you sure you didn't speak to Mark Newsome? He's the one that followed Jim Crispin.
No, they were here when you got here. They were still here because Newsome and I went over them, and they were here when you got here.
How long was Newsome here?
16 months.
He sat in there a long time, and what did he...
I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
Okay, well, it's okay. I mean, they were innocuous boxes and, you know, but I turned them over to the county.
Okay. Well, for some reason, I thought the CPA firm had...
No, they didn't. The only records they have would be the minutes that they took for us during meetings.
Okay. Did, okay. Any, did anybody else have any comment? All right. We're down to item number nine, which is a resolution to appeal North Carolina General Statute 105-275, exclusion of ad valorem tax for solar facilities. Commissioner Richardson.
Huh?
No, Buzio.
Buzio.
Yeah. Y'all look so much alike.
No, 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 no. Buzio has hair.
I support it. I'm willing to make the motion. That's not a problem.
Okay. Commissioner Buzio.
If you don't vote for this, you're gutless. I don't know if you want me to read this.
No.
Just let me say that this is a resolution of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners requesting North Carolina General Assembly to repeal North Carolina General Statute 105-275, Prenz 45, excluding the 80% of the appraised value of solar energy facilities from the tax. As was discussed earlier and also by the chairman, we're required to give an 80/20 write-off to solar energy facilities in the county. The state removed their requirement and left it on the county. So, on the back of the taxpayer, you are actually paying for this. And if I could find it, there's also a, in the, one of the tax bills that's going through Congress, they are also going to remove about $12 billion if it passes in tax breaks. Wish I could find a piece of, I brought the legislation with me. It's here someplace. Tax breaks from the, from the solar industry also. So, the feds are taking that step. The state's taking a step and just pushing it down on us. So, that's what the purpose of the resolution is, to ask the state to reconsider and remove that abatement on the county. If this just passes by the board, it will also be sent to all clerks in the state, clerks to the board of commissioners in the state, and also to legislators. So, I'm asking, making a motion that the board approve this resolution to be sent out.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Buzio and a second by Commissioner Brin. Questions, comments? One comment, Chilwell County and Pasquetan County has already approved the same motion. If not, those in favor of the motion or for the resolution, raise your right hand. The vote was unanimous. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to let Commissioner Booth go to Raleigh and work on that.
Yeah. Get it done, y'all can get it done by sending a resolution.
Okay. We're down to item number 10, which is updated engagement letter due to change in audit firms. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was before my time, but back in the spring of 2015, CRI won the bid to complete the county's audit for three, for three years, including fiscal years ended 2015, 2016, and 2017. That audit has always been done out of the Bellhaven office, and Jeff Best has always been the partner that was in charge of our audit for all three years. We did receive notification back several weeks ago that CRI would be closing the Bellhaven office as of October 31st. And I was contacted by CRI to discuss our options for completing the 2017 audit, since we're right in the middle of it. After a lot of discussion, I feel like the best solution would be to allow Jeff Best, under his new firm name, to complete our audit. He's always been the partner, as I said, that's been in charge of... He's always been the partner, as I said, that's been in charge of our audit. He's most familiar with our records, and he's halfway through this year's audit. I did reach out to the local government commission and spoke with the director, Ms. Edmondson, and she felt like the only thing we would need to do is to get a resignation letter from CRI, which is included on page 127, and an updated engagement letter between Jeff Best CPA and the county, which begins on page 128. So I'm asking you tonight to accept the resignation letter from CRI and approve the attached engagement letter between Beaufort County and Jeff Best CPA.
Any questions of Anita's recommendation?
Just a clarification. I talked to you about this. This is for one year. Is that correct?
This is the last year.
A continuing, because every three years, we go out for a new audit bid.
Right.
We will go out on bids this spring coming up, yes.
So this is not a continuing thing? Okay.
But the previous firm was already into the audit. I mean, I don't know what, how far, whether it's 50% or...
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, so. And he was the partner in charge. Any other comments? I have a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, and a second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you. Item number 11, request for property town of Aurora. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. From the information you have in front of you, there's a piece of property in Aurora, 500 Main Street. It is commonly known, or has been commonly known, as the Holly Arrington property. It was acquired by the county under a tax foreclosure. Property was demolished and tor, condemned and torn down by the Town of Aurora at a cost of about $24,000 because of asbestos and some other things related. They are asking that instead of the county selling that property under upset bid, that they transfer that property back to the city. General Statute 168-274 allows any government unit, upon such terms and conditions as it deems wise, with or without consideration, exchange with, lease to, lease from, sell to, or purchase from any other governmental unit any interest in real or personal property. So the statutes allow you to, under the conditions you may set, exchange or sell to them that piece of property, and they're asking that you do that at no cost to them.
When you say exchange...
Or sell to them at no cost.
I didn't think that we could, they said back there, they wanted us to give them the property.
That's right. You're selling it to them at no consideration.
Oh, okay.
The statutes allow you to do that. A governmental unit to a governmental unit. So we recommend you do that.
Okay. Any questions? Entertainer motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Brennan, and a second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, Katie. Okay, we're down to item number 12, the solar facility moratorium. That's you, David.
Yes, the suggested ordinance for imposing a one-year moratorium on the acceptance processing or consideration of applications for solar arrays pursuant to NC General Statutes 153A-340H appears on page 142, 143, and 144. Yep, that's right. And we have now had our two public hearings, so it's a question of whether or not you all want to consider that.
Okay.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Evans? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Brennan. Now we're open for discussion and comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to get this on record. If we approve this moratorium, it can be removed at any time?
Yes.
Or it can be renewed at any time, at the end of the first year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the way it's written, it's for one year.
One year. But we can renew it, but then, if need be, we can renew it, what is it?
I don't think you can renew it.
Ninety days before?
I think so.
I think that's what you told me one time.
Go through the process again.
There's some statutory language in there that addresses that, but remember, a moratorium is put in place so that it gives you time to act on your ordinance. So the concern would be that you take more than a year to work on these ordinance. We're going way, way too slow.
Oh, I don't disagree with you on that.
Well, we finished the ordinance to the moratorium, does?
I...
You can kill it.
Well, you can kill it as a part of passing the ordinance. If you look at some of the language that's in the moratorium, we've talked about two things at the state level that we have no control over. That's the state tax statute of 20%. That's number one. And number two is a decommissioning. You know, we get told by people in the industry and people at NC State that at the end of 25 years, this has another, or is producing at 80%, and I'm just throwing that out. I think it's 80% at the end, so it still does have the ability to continue to produce electricity. My biggest concern and reason that I supported and wanted to do the moratorium is that I've been around 69 years, and I've seen one, better not use that word since this is being televised, but we've seen a lot of change in technology. I mean, just think about the old bag phone that we used to haul around on the cell, for cellphone, and what we're using now, and the capability of just that smartphone. If somebody comes out with a device that's the size of a generator that we're already using in your homes, that you could use 24/7, you know, technology's going to change. So it's true, it might have a productive life, it might be still producing, but my number one concern is technology, and the market will take, can take care of that. And what I have tried to say is that the industry and the state is leaving the county in a heck of a position, because we have sinking funds in other industries to clean up at the end, if there's a problem. But there is no sinking fund. We, all of these contracts depend on either the owner or the LLC to clean it up. That's not good enough. We've got to have a sinking fund that'll clean these up if there is any problem, and people just walk away from them. It's a little bit different than a heist, a little bit different than a war heist. I mean, I sure wouldn't want one of these things out there with a fence around it from now to eternity. So that's the reason of having 12 months on there. It's not just about doing the ordinance part and working with the buffers and the setbacks and the landscaping, so. That's, that was the whole purpose of trying to go, you know, beyond 90 days or 120 days by going out there. If we're able to see some actions and things happen, we can lift it at any time, but it's more than the committee just coming back and the commissioner saying, "The setback's going to be 125 or 500, and we're going to require, you know, trees to be planted in front of the fence," that sort of thing. Okay.
One more thing. Hood just said something, Mr. Attorney. Commissioner Richardson just said something, that if we enact the ordinance, does it automatically kill the moratorium at that time, or do we have to vote on killing the moratorium?
Your vote is to pass the moratorium.
Mm-hmm. And once we, once we did the ordinance the way we wanted to bring it to the board, if it passes, does it automatically kill the moratorium?
Not automatically. You could put that as part of your ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah. Or you could do it separately. You could, you know, withdraw your moratorium.
Right.
But you would have to do one or the other.
But if I remember correctly, when we were coming up with the time, whether it was six months, 12 months, 24 months, is we had to state a reason in there, and we've stated in this resolution the things that I just mentioned as it relates to the tax situation and the decommission.
It says it's anticipated that the minimum number of days will be required to complete that process, and we had said one year.
Right.
Or 365 days.
Well, Commissioner Booth says we're probably not going to get the state to make the change, but, you know, we've got to make an effort, we've got to make an effort and try to...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I think I have two, a senator and a representative that's willing to go to bat for us on the tax amendment.
Okay.
To get it in the legislation.
Mr. Evans?
Is the legislature going into a short or a long session next year? Do we know?
Short.
Short.
Yeah. But Dave, Dave talked to me about it.
Get an answer on that.
No, there's always the long session is the first, right after the election, and the short session is always the second time, guys. I mean, it's been that way forever.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I think on a tax issue, we have the state now that's done away with it, and we have the federal government, it's going to be 12.3 billion, if the tax bill goes through, as it's written, will raise 12.3 billion in new taxes over the solar energy facilities by repealing an inflation increase for the renewable energy production. So they used to keep, get all these tax breaks. Now the government's estimating in the new tax bill that they'll raise that, and the government will receive $12.3 billion. So we have the federal government taking steps, we have the state taking steps, and it's still on our backs, on the backs of the tax base.
The letter that the commissioners received from the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association had a number, and I'll read this to you. In December 2016, solar installations occupied approximately 0.2% of North Carolina's total cropland. When the site in Teresia is completed, it will occupy 0.8% in Beaufort County, which is four times the state. It's a little bit unfair to criticize us when you're looking at 100 counties and doing the statistics. There are counties that are heavily into the solar. So just so that everybody will know, we'll be approaching 1% of our cropland in Beaufort County after the site is completed in Teresia. Any other comments?
I want to make a comment.
All right.
I'm not going to be able to vote for the moratorium for several reasons. Number one, the people who were proposing the solar farm made their concessions that the school said that they wanted, and I felt like everybody in the Teresia area had gotten what they wanted. I don't know why we're still beating this dead horse. The second reason is, we already have an ordinance that regulates solar farms, and if you want to change the setbacks, if that's what you're talking about doing, is changing the setbacks or changing whatever, I mean, you can change it within the ordinance that you already have. The toxicity thing that's you being used to scare the public is simply not true. We can't, I can't tell you, no one has, tell me somebody that's been killed by what's called REEs, rare earth elements. They haven't been. It doesn't get into the human system. The ions that make up REEs are quite a bit different from what is used to sustain human life, and it's their uniqueness that makes them so valuable in the things that they do, like supermagnetics, and these things are in cell phones and everything else. You can't, you cannot have modern technology without these things. I think the business about who's going to clean up the farm, I think there are going to be 10 people standing there to clean up the farm, because these things are recyclable, and they are in very, very short supply. Some of these things cost $3,000 and $4,000 a pound. So, you know, you tell me that somebody's not going to come and get them if you stop using them? So, you know, I think, I just, and property rights is the last issue. We've had people come in here who say, "I have property in Beaufort County." The income, regardless of what you're being told about losses on this land, there are no losses on this, the income from an acre lease on this far exceeds anything that you're going to get out of agricultural uses, and I cannot deny the citizens of Beaufort County the right to use their land to make a better income than they could otherwise make. Now, I support the change in the taxes and a whole bunch of other things that go along with this. There are some really bad things about it, the heavy-handed way the government has gone about paying subsidies on this and that sort of thing, but it's not up to me to try to damage the people of Beaufort County while I'm trying to stop a political event that took place in Raleigh, North Carolina, and Washington, DC.
Any other commissioner? If not, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Four. Those opposed, three. So the motion carries. Katie. Item number 13, bid offer to purchase property. David?
I think you have corrected, yeah, bid sheet that was given to you. It lists a number of offers, bid amounts, and that's for your approval. Once we have your approval, these go into the newspaper for notification for any upset bids. We are receiving upset bids. We've got some in the office now that have been advertised, and we've got upset bids, some we don't have upset bids on, but these are the new ones.
Okay.
And so these are the offers we have. These are all, except for the very first one, which is the property on 11th Street, which is $25,000. You can see what the offers are. We have, I think, $66,000 on that one piece of property up on...
Cow Farm.
Cow Farm Road. And that may be upset again.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, is that the one that started at 16,000?
Yep. It started at the value of the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions of, David, you've heard his recommendation? Can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, and a second by Commissioner Buzzio. All those in favor of the bid offer to purchase, raise your right hand. Motion was approved, unanimous. Okay, we're down to items number one and two, Hood, that you asked to move down for further discussion. I understand that you and Anita agreed that...
Yeah, Anita would like to defer those until she, so that the person that did the actual work on them can be here to answer the questions. So I don't have a problem with that at all.
All right, so they'll be moved to the December meeting. We're down to item number J, which is the closed session, so I asked David if he'll read us into the closed session. Drop some.
This is, need a motion to go into closed session under NCGS 143-318-11, Pren A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and for discussion of existing litigation, Leary versus the Board of Commissioners, 17 CVS 313, and to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agent concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. In accordance with 151 NC App 651, 2002, the property location is 227 North Respe Street. Property owner is Respe Street Properties LLC, and the proposed use of the property is parking and office space.
Can I have a motion to go into the closed session? Can I have a motion to go into the closed session? Motion by Commissioner Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're back out of closed session and there'll be no action. We're ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I think we had two.
Motion was made by Langley and second by Brennan.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.